Good evening, good evening everyone. Welcome to committee in ordinance, the five at five forty-three. And today is May twelve of twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chairman Espinal.
Present.
Vice Chairwoman Peterson is absent. Councilwoman Harris.
Present.
Councilman Vargas.
Present.
Councilor Royas is absent. You have three present and two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize our council colleagues. Council President Miller is here with us. Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Anthea Graves, as well as Councilman Goncal, who just joined us. As well as City Solicitor Ettee Schwabs, and along with my colleague. Thank you all once again for being here. This is a regular committee on ordinance meeting, but we will be allowing public testimony. So if you haven't already, you still have time to sign up if you'd like to be heard. Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Excel Academy Rhode Island.
Thank you. And before we get started, I have letters of testimonies for and against. So I'll entertain a motion to enter letters of testimony into the records. Most of this made by Councilman Vargas and second by Councilwoman Harris. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. Thank you. And I also have a sub-A. So I'll entertain a motion to enter substitution A into the records.
So moved.
Made by Councilwoman Harris, second by Councilman Vargas. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody that's going to present on this item here? So we have Chief Courtney Hopkins, as well as Owen. Thank you. So when you come up, please state your name for the record, please.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Courtney Hawkins and I serve as Chief Operating Officer for the city. Chairman and committee members, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I'm going to keep my remarks brief, but wanted to make what I believe are three important points about the lease that's before you. So first, this lease is truly a compromise. We were before you many months ago with a different version. We heard a lot of feedback and we worked hard to make it better for the city, for the district, and for Excel. First, it provides money that benefits PPSD, so it includes two and a half million dollars that will go to the renovation of this building to benefit PPSD. That money, if not allocated through this lease, will have to come from the pool of money that is going to fund the building of a new school for Messer and West Broadway communities. So it means that we don't have to take money from the new school to renovate this old building. The building renovations will be paid for through the context of this lease. The lease also provides fifty thousand dollars a year in neighborhood investment funds to be directed by the counselor. And third, it provides ongoing rent income to the district's capital revolving fund. This is a fund we've talked about in other contexts that provides for ongoing maintenance and improvements in schools across the city. Currently, there is not a regular income stream into that fund. So this lease, the rent associated with it can be allocated to the CRF. In the later years of that lease, it's a million dollars a year to benefit district school maintenance and improvements. There are also additional compromises in the sub-A that you just received. The most important, I think, is that we changed how the extensions on the lease are approved. So after the initial thirty-five-year term, any subsequent extensions will come and have to be approved by the mayor and the council at that time. There are also some changes that clarify some issues around sublease that some of you raised for us and some other small changes. All of those were directed by conversations that Owen and Mike had with the council. Second important point, this conversation has gotten wrapped up in conversations around charter expansion, which while I understand, I would offer is not really the challenge that is in front of us today. This school is approved for these charter seats. If they don't access this building, they will access another building. They will likely pay rent, probably to a for-profit company. It will likely take another building in the city off the tax rolls because it will be a school. It's not about Excel's existence. It's about whether or not we're going to offer this building and whether the use of this building as a school makes the best sense for the city. And I'm telling you, having spent a lot of time on it, I do believe that it does. Thirdly, on that point, if Excel doesn't move into this building, it has some significant financial implications for the city and the district I want you to consider. First, as you probably know, PPSD is going to move into that building in September for a period of five years. As a part of this lease, Excel has agreed to sublease the building, half of the building to PPSD. If Excel doesn't move into the building, PPSD will then be the sole occupant, which means they'll be responsible for all the maintenance and upkeep of the building, all of the utility bills. You know, if the roof fails, PPSD and the city will have to pay for that without support from anyone else. We've negotiated with Excel that large capital investments into the building will be borne by Excel. Smaller things will be shared between the two parties. But if PPSD is in that building alone, they will be responsible, just like they are for any other school building. Further, when PPSD leaves the building in five years, it'll come back to the city control and we will be responsible for yet another empty blighted building. That means, you know, this year we've spent roughly three hundred thousand dollars keeping that building safe and empty. That comes out of our regular budget. That is money that could go to water parks or rec centers or other things we all want to invest in. Instead, we will have to put that money into an empty building until we figure out what it is we're going to do with it. I'll say just in closing, I'm obviously disappointed. It's no secret I'm disappointed we are where we are on this topic tonight because I think this lease before you is a real example of working together to understand each other's perspectives and trying to come to something that we can all feel proud of, where we move the needle on behalf of everyone's opinion. And I think the draw to bring this into a bigger conversation that is not going to be solved, whether this lease is approved or not, is going to ultimately result in us not doing the thing that is right for the city and not doing the thing that is right for the kids and families that are going to occupy this building or another building in the future. So I hope that you all consider that guidance. I will stay through the hearing tonight if there are other questions. And I'd like to turn it over to Owen Sterns for his comments from Excel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, Chairman Espinal and other counselors. I'm grateful to be back here before you all. What we believe is a strong proposal, multiple benefits for multiple parties. As Courtney just outlined, I'm grateful to the city and the council leadership for working with us to strengthen this proposal, including over the last, including over the course of several conversations over the past month with many of you. We've done our best to operate in good faith and I hope that this new proposal meets your approval. I want to name a tension that Courtney also named that lies at the center of any conversation about charter schools. That tension was created thirty years ago by a state-level decision to allow parents to have more choice in where their children go to school and the associated impact that that decision then has on PPSD. Our conversation tonight is not going to resolve that tension. But it does do something that's pretty unique, which is provide meaningful wins to the city, to PPSD, and to Excel. It's hard to come up with arrangements that do that, work for three distinct parties. The deal is not perfect for any one party. If it were, it probably would not work for the other two. But the fact that all three parties are coming to you as a united front saying, yes, this has significant benefits for us and importantly, for the children of Providence, please move this forward. I think that's important. Last year, when the council voted against this lease, I heard a number of you express disappointment that it felt like we were again pitting charter public school students against district public school students. Why can't we find solutions that serve all students? I believe this proposal does a much better job of doing that. I'm glad that it has Superintendent Montanez's support as well. You'll hear from some, not all, of the over three hundred passionate members of the Excel community who are here this evening. Thank you all for coming. And you've collectively received over two hundred letters from members of each of your wards expressing their support for this proposal. While we are hopeful for the possibility of helping bring this important building back to life, the most important reason why this approval matters to our community is that eighty-four percent of our students live in Providence. They currently are spending nearly an hour a day on a bus to and from our campus in North Providence. That's over eleven hundred hours per week lost across our three hundred students. That missing time translates to less time for enrichment and extracurricular activities, less time just being at home, connecting with family. We would love for them to be going to a school much closer to where they actually live. I also want to underline something Courtney spoke to, which is that Excel has been approved by Ride to Operate. The decision on this lease approval will not accelerate or impede our growth. If not approved, we will secure a lease at a commercial property, which will have the additional impact, as Courtney said, of reducing tax revenue for the city once that building gets classified, reclassified as a school. We estimate that impact is another two hundred thousand dollars a year of the city's tax rolls. So there's three hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain the building. There's our minimum of two hundred thousand dollars a year rent, up to a million dollars, and then another two hundred thousand dollars of a new building taking credit off the city's tax rolls. So to vote against this, you're voting against seven hundred thousand dollars a year to the city's coffers. And from what I hear, that may be needed right now. Let me close with a story that gives me some hope. A week ago tonight, there was a rather contentious community meeting at Asa Messer, partially due to my not reading the room correctly and missing the mark in some of my comments. That's not the part that gives me hope, although I do hope I'm better next time. What gives me hope is what happened after things had calmed down. And Excel and Asa Messer, apologies, Excel and Asa Messer teachers and staff started talking with each other. Through those conversations, we started to learn a bit more about the amazing work and results they have achieved, something we were aware of, but didn't know enough of, moving from a one-star to a three-star school in a year, exiting over two dozen students from MLL status, amongst other things. It also reminded at least our team that we are all connected here by a common goal, how to provide the highest quality education we can to our students. Regardless of what happens with this proposal, I hope those conversations can continue. I'd like to ask Stephanie Patton, our Deputy Chief Schools Officer, to briefly speak to an issue that's come up before, how Excel both enrolls and supports students with disabilities and multilingual learners, and then happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Here's Kelly.
Good evening.
Good evening. Not great with mics, so hopefully you can hear me. My name is Stephanie Patton. First, I want to say thank you so much for allowing us here to speak. Appreciate the time. I'm our Deputy Chief Schools Officer, which is a role similar to an Assistant Superintendent. I supervise our principals and manage our middle school programming and have the opportunity to oversee that. I have worked at Excel for twelve years as both a teacher, a dean of students, a principal, and now as in my current role. And something that's really important to Excel and has been, while we're only in Providence year three, we've been in Massachusetts for twenty-two years, and that is being a neighborhood school. We have operated for over twenty years as neighborhood schools in Massachusetts and really love serving our families in Rhode Island. And with eighty-four percent of our students as Providence residents, would love to be in a building that is in Providence. As Owen shared, the commute to North Providence is tough. Most of our students take the bus and then therefore have less access to some of the opportunities that they would if we were in the neighborhood. So if you were there and you want to have some extra tutoring for a half an hour, you can't do that because the bus schedule doesn't allow for that to happen all the time. The other piece I think that is really important to name and to get ahead of a little bit is that we're not here to debate charter public schools versus district public schools, but I do want to share some pieces I often hear that are just not true about Excel. So I can't speak for all charters, but I can speak for us. And we serve any kid who comes through our doors, whether they are a general education student, a student with disabilities, or a multilingual learner. And that is how we have always operated, both in our history in Massachusetts as well as as our school in North Providence. Our enrollment is based on a lottery. And our lottery system includes name, address, family information, but does not include academic abilities, whether or not a child has a disability, or their language status. The lottery is run, it is a sort of lottery is run as it is any lottery that is a blind lottery is run, and that is how our students get accepted. We do everything we can on the recruitment end to make sure that our student population mirrors that of the sending districts. And with that, we're not quite there yet in Providence. This year, so this is data from today that we're able to pull based on our enrollment, we have a ten percent student with disabilities population and twenty-four percent of our students are multilingual learners. That is not exactly where PPSD is right now. The district's at about thirty-eight percent for MLLs and about fifteen percent for students with disabilities. And we are then on that not where we want to be. We really do open our doors to all students. And I think some of the debate that charters don't serve kids or won't do these pieces actually is part of what gets in the way. In Massachusetts, it took us a number of years to have our numbers match that of the sending district. And we're really proud that they are very close, if not matching, across demographics. At our schools there, we have our sub-separate classrooms at both our middle schools and our high schools. We have an overage program for children who are adults who are eighteen to twenty-two, who still need our school support and services. And we are not required by law or by anyone else to run that program. We choose to do so because it is what is best for our kids and our families. And that is our mentality is like, we are here to support all learners and that's what we're going to continue to do. And so if you hear information that that is not what charter schools do, that's just not who Excel is. We also know that families have a hard time sending their kids thirty minutes on the bus each way. And being in a neighborhood school means we really will be able to serve the students of Providence and ensure that our populations mirror that of the district. I'll be here tonight to answer any questions you have about our academic programming or anything related to school. And I'd like to introduce our last speaker, Kelly Garcia, who will share a little bit more about herself.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes and good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, everyone. A little short, alrighty. My name is Kelly Garcia and I come to you from Chelsea, Massachusetts. My name is Kelly Garcia, and I come to you from Chelsea, Massachusetts. Now you may ask, what is she doing here, all the way from Chelsea? The answer is simple. I'm here as a proud alum of Excel Academy. I am a special education administrator at the high school, and like you all, I'm a Chelsea City Councilor at large. I'm here to speak from my heart about the impact this school has had on my life and why the students of Providence deserve the same opportunity. Excel Academy is not a typical charter school. We are different. It is a lifeline, a community partner. And like Providence, the city of Chelsea is a majority Latino community made up of hard-working families who simply want the best for their children and cannot afford a private education. Excel offered us that, a free college preparatory education rooted in equity, excellence, and high expectations. I graduated as part of Excel's second class nearly 20 years ago, and to this day, Excel is home for me. Today, I lead special education programming at the high school, where I helped launch our first 18- to 22 transition program. We don't stop serving our highest needs students at the moment they turn 18. We walk beside them into adulthood, building individualized pathways that lead to greater independence and dignity. Through this program, our students receive life skills instruction, practice daily routines, navigate public transportation, open bank accounts, grow grocery shopping, and participate in structured internships and community-based job placements. I also founded our LEAP program, which supports students with the most complex needs, including those with Down Syndrome, and providing them with real-world vocational training, weekly community outings, and opportunities to develop social, emotional, and functional communication skills. Every week, they use public transit, engage in workplace simulations, and learn the tools they need to lead meaningful, independent lives. In addition to leading programming, I'm also the case manager for three students with significant mobility needs who use power chairs. I ensure that their education plans are not only legally compliant but truly inclusive, advocating for physical access, community inclusion, assistive technology, and personal dignity in every aspect of their day. These students deserve the same chance to thrive, and Excel makes sure they have it. So councilors, I know firsthand how hard it is to sit in your seats and make a decision that carries weight. But this isn't about politics. This is about our youth, families, and the future of Providence. This is about the power of education to transform lives, just like it transformed mine. Communities like Chelsea and Providence need more than empty promises. They need action that opens doors. While adults continue to debate politics of public education and funding formulas, our kids are the ones paying the price. They cannot wait for broken systems to be fixed. They need you to say yes to growth, to opportunity, and excellent learning. So I ask, please put politics aside and center what truly matters: our children, their future, and their right to a quality education. Thank you y muchisima gracias.
Thank you so much. And also, welcome to Providence. Before we continue, like to acknowledge Council President Protemp, Councilman Juan Pichardo has joined us. Thank you so much. Any question from our committee members, for the presenters? Hearing none. So now we'll turn, thank you so much once again for your in-depth presentation. We'll hear from our Council President, Rachel Miller.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and I really want to thank you for bringing this forward, and especially for opening up tonight for public comment. It's really wonderful to see the chambers full of people. As you know, Carro G. Laurel School is in Ward 13, in the heart of Federal Hill. It's a building that has seen so many generations of students over the years. And so as we deliberate tonight, first, I want to thank both Chief Hawkins and Excel Academy for taking all of the comments from multiple councilors and I think, you know, really adding to the proposal that's in front of you. I also have been pretty constantly, I would say, every day, multiple conversations for a good 14 days now, maybe, maybe more, just in our neighborhood about the impact of this, both from some families of Excel students, families of public school students, teachers, everyone who, and also adjacent neighbors, who feel strongly and passionately, and I'm sure we'll hear from folks tonight. And I think that it's a good moment to answer some outstanding questions that we have as stewards of the city's finances, as stewards of the city buildings, in a moment when, you know, we know the city has financial challenges and we are also so aware of the high cost of rent and the need for development. So I think that it would be in our, in our interest to keep this very strong proposal in front of us for a few weeks, answer some questions, in no way leave the Excel community hanging, because I know that they need a decision before we move too forward here so that they can make plans for their school. But I would just ask that you take comment from the public tonight and that you then continue this issue for several weeks as we sort of continue answering some serious questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for my committee members, for Council President? Hearing none, thank you so much for your testimony, Council President. Okay, so now we'll open up to the public, and the first person will be Kelly Garcia. So they had already signed up. So then I have Gabrielle Lang.
Good evening, thank you. How much time do I have? Three minutes, is that right?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
If you could keep it to one, I would really appreciate it. Only because of the number, only because of the number of people that signed up, I'm here all night, so, you know, two minutes would be preferred.
I'll talk as fast as I possibly can. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, I do really appreciate it. I'm Gabe Long, I'm an Asa Messer parent. I don't have Sub A, I only have the lease that was posted a couple of weeks ago, so I apologize if some things have changed. I am going to speak to this lease. I have to say, legally and--
We do have some Sub A available that you can, you can take with you after.
Thank you, I appreciate it. This initial draft of the lease, legally and financially, I hate to be combative, but it's a joke, and ethically, it is an insult to the people of Providence. Bottom of page one, it says that Excel will be in charge of the whole building, and when PPSD uses half as a swing space, it is the tenant, it is leasing from Excel. As far as I can tell, that's still in Sub A. The rent is $1, so why would Excel be a good landlord? PPSD is stuck with the space, they've just spent $3 million fixing it up, and they're stuck with Excel. So Excel can say, hey, you want to be our tenant? Your kids don't get to use the playground, we need that for our dumpsters. You want to be our tenant? We get to tell you when your kids eat lunch. And if you're thinking, that's crazy, we won't let that happen, you won't have a choice. Once the lease is signed, it is a binding legal document. The mayor, the city council, anybody from the city of Providence won't have any power to tell Excel what Excel can do with their building. We will operate however they want us to operate and have no recourse. There are also massive financial loopholes in this lease. I sadly don't have time to detail all of them, I'm happy to chat with you after. I will say that Mr. Sterns mentioned a $700,000 a year number. Let's do a little back-of-the-envelope math on the other side of that coin. So 84% of Excel students come from Providence. Providence spends about $22,000 a year per student. So you say Laurel eventually becomes a school of 1,000 students, 84% of that, whatever, you're looking at $18,500 going from the city of Providence to a basically completely unaccountable private company that can do with it whatever they want. They can expand into Connecticut with that money, they don't have to spend it here. When we keep that money within the city system, we have a say over it. We can talk to all of you. Once it goes into their coffers, who knows where it goes? We have no idea, we have no recourse. That is the continual message of this lease. And the last thing I will say, I am, I am going to wrap this up, I promise. Excel is what is called a no-excuses school. They've scrubbed that language from their description, they used to have it, they don't have it anymore because they probably know it's not PC, but their suspension rates have not significantly declined. So suffice it to say that they are still a no-excuses school. What does that mean? That means that when you are at their school, you have to follow very strict behavioral guidelines, and there are no excuses for not following those guidelines. I want to talk for just one second about some of the excuses that my son's classmates might have for, say, having an untucked shirt, not standing up straight, or talking out of turn in class. At my son's school, some kids don't have food in their houses, some of them don't know where they're going to sleep tonight, some aren't sure if it's even safe to close their eyes at all. At my son's school, a real public school, the staff at administration is caring for these children, sometimes providing the one safe space these kids have, and sometimes feeding them the only meals that they will eat that day. But at a no-excuses charter school, you're hungry, you're sleeping in your car, you're unsafe, that's no excuse. As you can tell, I am disgusted. I keep hearing, oh, Excel is approved to expand, as if it's a foregone conclusion. They are approved to expand somewhere in Rhode Island, yes, but it doesn't need to happen in Providence, it doesn't need to happen next year. This building can be affordable housing, this building can serve any of the many students who are on wait lists for PPSD. Copy that. We're going to hear a lot about wait lists tonight, 19,000 students applying for some fraction of those spots. I can tell you, there's wait lists to get into Varton, there's wait lists to get into career and technical programs at PPSD, there's a wait list at Kennedy, there are a lot of kids waiting to get into this great school system. Please do the right thing and turn this building into something that actually serves the community. Thank you.
Next, I have Natalie Flores. Natalie Flores. All right, let's, let's try to keep it to two minutes. Let's go.
Good evening, city council members, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Natalie Flores, I'm in the 7th grade at Excel Academy, and I've been there since 5th grade. I want to start off by saying that Excel for me is amazing. All the teachers support us and care for our learning. Our community grows every year, I would know I have been there since 5th grade, so we are all like a big family that supports each other. Currently, a bus ride to Excel is about half an hour. This causes me to wake up early, which takes away from my sleep, which doesn't let me put all into school. Getting this building will also allow me, will also allow, will also allow our school to expand, which means not having so many students in the, in the classroom, which could let students not to have enough of their needs met, as having too many students wouldn't allow a teacher to be with them every single time, they need something. So council members, please consider giving us the building. You will be helping many students to get the space to learn and be safe, give us the opportunity to excel in school. Thank you, council members, for letting me give you a perspective on why we need this building. I hope we have your support. My name is Natalie Flores, thank you.
All right, next, I have Maggie Mion.
Good morning. My name is Maggie Mion. I'm a Providence school parent and a concerned member of this community. I'm here tonight because of the proposed move of Excel Academy charter into the neighborhood, which raises serious concerns about how we allocate public resources and who our school system is truly serving. There is a lot of discussion regarding Excel's move, and while there are some in support, I want to make it clear this is deeply dividing our neighborhoods. As a public school parent, I know what it means to fight repeatedly and relentlessly for basic needs. At the same time, charters like Excel continue to draw from the same limited public funding pool, undermining the already strained resources of district schools that serve the vast majority of our city's children. People love to say, if Excel doesn't come here, they'll just go somewhere else. But that does not mean we need to roll out the red carpet, hand over our property, ignore the long-term impacts on our district. City-owned buildings like this should be part of a solution that serves the majority of our students, not hand it over to institutions that pick and choose who they serve. Are we really expected to welcome another charter that will continue to stretch thin resources, deepen the inequality, and widen the divide in our community? Transportation is also talked about a lot. This is not unique to charter schools. If I were to choose, and that's the key word, choose, to put one of my children in a private school or an out-of-district school, transportation would be the same. Instead, we could reimagine this building as affordable housing or even a CTE hub, available to students from multiple high schools across Providence. We have students eager to explore new fields, and they often have to leave the district to find something for them. Why not create opportunities that keep our students engaged and keep them in our public schools? This decision is bigger than one school. It's about whether we are working to strengthen our public school system and our communities or quietly dismantling it piece by piece. Replacing community schools with charter operations is not a sustainable solution. Don't let the short-term decision become a long-term loss.
Then I have Milan Orgin.
My name is Milan. I'm a 6th grader at Excel Academy and I live in Providence. You should give the Carro G. Laurel Building to our school because they are supportive and always push learning, and they make others feel included. I drive to school every morning, my mom drives me to school every morning. It takes me 15 minutes to get to school, but with the Carro G. Laurel Building, it'll only take me 10. And having a school closer to my, my neighborhood would help because it can give others the opportunity to wake up later and have a better school day and have many opportunities. This can also help families because it gives many other people from their family a better opportunity for learning. And also, thank you for listening to me, please say yes to Excel Academy's lease.
Thank you for your, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony. Next, I have Carol Pagan. Oh, Pagan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Pagan. I am a Providence resident. I was hoping to be heard at today's hearing, but after attending the horrendous community meeting at A Semesur on May 5th, I realized that Excel Academy's lease is a done deal. Excel Academy has already invested funds into the renovation of Carl Laurel that's taking place now. The renovation is already taking place. Why would they invest that money if the lease was not already a backroom deal with the city? The city council is being disingenuous with the public. As a taxpayer in the city, I am deeply disgusted by the appearances of this situation. How are we, the Providence citizens, to trust that these hearings are really here to help be a part of the process when it appears that this is a, that the process already went on without taxpayer voice or input? The city's chief operating officer said that no developers, no developers, were interested in the Carl Laurel Building to create low-income housing, which proves to be, proves to be a very serious need for our city. I currently have an encampment directly behind my house of unhoused individuals below, behind my street, between 146 and Langdon Street. Did you even look for developers? As a city resident, I would say a priority has to be finding low-income housing for our poor as opposed to bringing yet another big-box charter to our city. The only option from the very beginning for this building has been creating yet another charter school. Unfortunately, I can't trust any of this process or the city council members supporting this expansion. According to Redfin, Providence ranks as least affordable metro area for renters. As of December 2024, the median asking rent is $2,145, and the income required to afford this median rent is a yearly household income of $85,800. Unfortunately, the median renter income in Providence is $50,408. The radical difference between income required and the median renter income is negative How can you possibly justify using any available space in the city for anything other than low-income housing? I have a PPSD, I have PPSD teacher colleagues, teachers, who are unable to be approved for housing in the city right now. Due to the high rent prices, they can't even afford it on their teacher's salary. If a highly educated professional can't be approved, what is to be of our many residents who earn minimum wages? If government is for the people and by the people, then this sounds like it should be the first and main priority of the city council, not bringing a 65-year lease to a charter that they can re-release for profit, like Promesa did. And Achievement First, they're sending extra money to their other charters in other states because they pay a dollar rent. This parallel public school system is helping to drain taxpayer money. Are you really listening to the people or to the special interest groups pumping money into changing your minds? Taxpayers can do basic math. The PPSD will not see a dime from the revolving fund until Excel has fully reduced reductions for their capital improvements of $14 million. According to the Providence Journal, today, it said Henry Barnard is their second choice, which has never been a PPSD building, thereby respecting real public school space.
Thank you for your testimony. And as a point of clarification, you know, I'm not gonna engage in debate with your comments. I'm just here to take the testimonies. But Excel is not doing any work in there. PPSD is. So just want to make that clear. Next, I have David Talon. Mr. David Talon. Okay, we'll put Mr. David Talon on hold.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Shannon MacLeod, and I am a proud Providence public school teacher, and I proudly serve my fellow union members as a vice president of high schools for the Providence Teacher Union. I'm here to speak against this disastrous lease for a big-box charter company. Big-box charter companies profit off of students. Last month, in front of the House Committee on Education, Tim Duffy, the executive director of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, brought the hard truth and numbers to the committee. The gross financial disparity is when $15 million is budgeted in the state for high-cost special ed reimbursements. You see districts get reimbursed when a student's cost reaches over $70,000, one student's cost. In that $15 million, charter schools are being reimbursed $33,000, and it must be noted that those three schools that are being reimbursed are not big-box charter companies like Excel or Achievement First. But with those numbers, I want to dig deeper. So I looked at the recent RIDE report cards. For Dynamic Learning Maps, DLMs, which is Students with Alternative Assessments, Excel's DLM population is less than 10, so they have no data. Providence has 163 in grades 3 through 8. This does not count the costs incurred for pre-K through 2 and high school. Just a population of 3 through 8, the most costly special education students, are at PPSD at a rate that is almost the entire population of Excel Academy. In addition, the RIDE School Support System Report dated May of '24 states, and I quote, "At this time, Excel Academy's sample size is too small for SSP to populate under indicator 2, which is participation and performance of children with IEPs on statewide assessments." Excel mentioned their Transitions Academy, they're quite proud of it. Why speak for a union of over 1,600 teachers who are proud of our Transitions Academy? And I'm not complaining about the number of differently-able students we have. I'm grateful my PPSD colleagues have these students, as we have more experienced teachers within our district with only 21 inexperienced teachers, so Excel's 88% inexperienced teachers. Last month, they sat here speechless as I heard Councilman Royas explain details of the lease. 65 years, they have the right to sublet as long as the entity they're subletting is the same business. Well, what business is that? Because in all my years, I've never heard of a school district that had so much money they cut checks for other organizations out of the state, or to afford transportation and dinner for people to come speak on their behalf. So to give this big-box charter company a lease in which they can profit on the backs of our families, it doesn't add up to me. In addition, what's going on with Section 12, where it says Excel can buy the building at any time during the lease? I was interested to hear the city say that $2 million would go to PPSD. That's great. However, in a Projo article from March 12th of 2024, Amy Russo talked about the Royas resolution that you guys passed, that PPSD is losing $30 million to charters. So that's putting a Band-Aid over a big old wound, because a company that is coming in and being choosy over their students, subletting their space, this isn't a school. It's an organization that runs with discriminatory practices. And don't take my word for it, as Chairman McMenour said that last month. This lease is a gift on taxpayers at the expense of our public schools and our public school students, and I hope you see a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, I have Lemond Zoe Arroyo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Zoe Arango, and I'm the 7th grade at Excel Academy. Thank you for letting me speak and having an opportunity to consider Excel's community to grow. Excel's a very good, helpful, and growing community. I say this because teachers and students help all of us grow and get ready for things ahead of us in life. Teachers also provide help for students who need it and use support. Currently, I wake up at 5:50 to 6:00 in the morning to get ready for, to get ready for school. My bus ride is about 30 minutes from where I live, which is in Providence. However, it is five minutes from, five minutes away from the Carl Laurel Building. If our school was close to our home, it would help not just me but other students. This is because it would help us get our rest we need and be able to get, to be in a good mood, not just that, but let us have a ready mindset to learn at school. Having a bigger, better building will also help students to wake up on time, will also help students to have, on the waiting list, to have an opportunity to join us at the Excel community. Again, my name is Zoe Arango. Please take time to consider everything I said. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Lindsay Paiva.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, everyone who's here. Thank you all for the time. My name is Lindsay Paiva, you she/her pronouns, and I'm speaking as a Providence resident and homeowner in Ward 5, and I also am a 3rd grade teacher at Webster Ave. in Councilman Vargas's district. And I'm imploring you to reject the proposed lease of Carl Laurel's building. I disagree that this lease proposal is not part of the debate about charter expansion in Providence. Of course it is. Money from our schools follows students into schools like Excel, who fundamentally do not serve all students. Our budgets have been frozen in Providence since January, and Providence teachers are writing Donors Choose proposals every week to try to fill the gaps. Tiffany mentioned that Excel is working on getting their numbers to match the districts, but my question is if the lottery is a true lottery, why aren't the numbers closer? What kinds of students are being recruited to apply? And in the meantime, why should they be allowed to drain money from our district to serve a select number of high-performing students that don't mirror our population? If around 80% of students at Excel come from Providence, that means all of that money comes from our budget. In the community meeting at Messer, when confronted about their special ed population, they said they could think of maybe five to six students with special needs who are put on a special schedule and serviced in their school. That's a resource model. I have that, more students than that in my 3rd grade classroom, which is a general ed room, never mind an entire school. And I still, you know, I know that they will stay otherwise, but our, our students' experiences tell a different story. What about newcomer MLL students? Are those families being recruited? Students with serious behavior concerns, as Gabe addressed? And if Excel's model is so amazing, why aren't they leasing buildings in Barrington, or in Narragansett, or in North Kingstown? Why aren't they replicating this model statewide, and why the focus on Providence? But I think that we know the answer. We cannot start to barter with charter organizations and sell out our public schools. It's a slippery slope. There are other solutions to balance the city budget. Let's start taxing luxury developers and hold universities and other organizations with millions of dollars of endowments accountable to support our public schools. Let's use buildings like Laurel's for affordable housing for our students and families. This is more than a line item in a budget. This is about protecting and defending public schools in Providence. The pattern is clear. Underfund our public schools, stop or delay repairs. I've had the same broken window for eight years, right? Sell them off to charter organizations who have the funding to restore the space. This is what has happened with countless buildings in PPSD. And if you look at the plan, the building repair plan and the K-8 plans, it really illuminates what school closures are next. And as someone at one of those schools that is not always paid attention to, I'd really implore you to think carefully about this decision. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Deani. I'm in 7th grade at Excel Academy. I live in Ward 11. I love my school because how welcoming they are to every community, and plus, they give us a prep for college. It makes me happy that everyone has an opportunity to learn and fit in. It takes me about 20 to 25 minutes to get to school every day. The Carl Laurel Building is only six minutes away from my house. Having my school near my home is important because after a long day and still having to do homework, it allows me to be more efficient with my time. It helps me and my family by, if playing a sport or being in an event, it will take less time and waste less gas to get there. Plus, also, a lot of students in Excel have out-of-school programs that they need to attend to. So having half an hour bus ride to get back home takes time away from their learning and education. Please say yes to Excel's lease, and thank you for listening.
Jessica B. Jessica B., let her be. Not upstairs. Okay, so we'll wait. And I have Digna Gonkure. I see Digna.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Brian Eldridge. I am currently a Providence resident and a 6th grade teacher at Excel Academy in Rhode Island. To me, the Carl G. Laurel Building means an opportunity to provide stable and safe learning communities and environments for students that otherwise I'm seeing right now are not being addressed. There's something from my time here in Providence that I'm seeing is not only a need, but just a really hard push that needs to happen for our community, not only for our students and families, but for our teachers as well. My hope for both people here in this meeting, but people in the community as well, is to push to consider the kids and families that will benefit from this building and put yourself in their shoes. Carl G. Laurel would mean more than just a school. It would mean a chance for change and positive hope for the future. Thank you very much.
Next, I have Emily Hoben.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Emily Hoben, and as many people here know, I am a former PPSD teacher and a current Excel Academy teacher. This morning, I looked forward to this meeting with high hopes for what it meant for my school's future, but at this point, I'm really frustrated. Frustrated with the waste, the waste of the building, the waste of the community it could build, the waste of the opportunity it could bring to our students. This attempt for housing is futile. Developers don't want it, and as a Ward 13 member, we don't want it either. What we want is a school that our kids can grow in. We want a school the neighborhood can be proud of. We want a future that uplifts us, not another two years of empty promises and empty halls. This building has been a school for nearly 100 years, and it should continue to be. I'm here to ask that Excel Academy be given the opportunity to move into this building and use it for the betterment of the entire neighborhood. An investment in education is the best investment that we can make. Please approve our lease and give this school 100 more years. Thank you.
Next, I have Caitlin Villarreal.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi. Let me address that. Great. Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you about this proposal. I am a Ward 5 resident, former resident of Ward 13 near the Laurel Building. My husband and I are both teachers at Excel Academy, and we have two small children together that will soon be school-aged. I have a master's degree in instructional systems design, and I am currently working on a doctorate in education, as well as a graduate certificate in education finance. I'm sharing these personal details with you to make it clear that I am not in support of this proposal simply because of my affiliation with Excel. I am also in support of this proposal as a community member and a parent, who will soon be making hard decisions about where to send my children for school, and as an expert in educational systems, who sees the impact Excel has on its students. Excel Academy was 3rd in the state in ELA growth on the 2024 RIDE CAS assessment, and 6th in the state in math growth. This is a testament to the hard work of everyone involved, from our head of school, DCIs, coaches, learning specialists, and teachers, to our students and their families who support their education. Our daily attendance average- Our daily attendance average for the current school year is 94%. It shows how effective our school initiatives are and how genuinely excited our students are to come to school. This year, we have also seen a 22% increase in the number of English-language learners meeting their benchmarks on the access test, which speaks to our ability to respond to students' individual learning needs. And contrary to previous testimony, our suspension rate for the school year has actually dropped by 50%. Additionally, all of this data shows that Excel Academy is aligned with Mayor Smiley's plan to build a better future for Providence schools as released in a letter to the community last month. At Excel, we empower students to make decisions that positively impact our community. I'll lead you with a short anecdote that shows this in action. During spring break last year, I was in Family Dollar in Ward 13, just blocks from the Carl G. Laurel Building. There, I ran into an Excel student hanging out with some neighborhood friends who go to another school. The boys were goofing around, acting like middle-school boys, and knocked several items off of a shelf. The Excel student stopped, picked the items that fell, and put them back on the shelf, and continued to do so even as his friends made fun of him. I know that there are so many factors that contribute to a person's character, but it was clear to me that this student has taken to heart our community values of accountability and community of care. Excel Academy is such a strong community asset. As a resident and parent in Providence, I want the children of our neighborhood to learn from this model. Allowing Excel Academy to move into the Carl G. Laurel Building would allow the community as a whole to benefit from our outcomes and our school values. It would also give new life and purpose to such a significant building, which is currently vacant and in need of repairs. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Jamie Greenthall. Jamie Greenthall.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Greenthall, Excel board member and a proud resident of Ward Three. So I know in my heart that despite the debate you're hearing tonight, the interests of everyone in this room are absolutely aligned. We want to provide the best education for the most students as quickly as possible. If we can all agree that this is our collective mission, then there is only one option here. Approve Excel's lease and get this building back online so we can return to the work of educating in this facility the students from our community. Time is of the essence. If we delay another year, or years, we fail in our mission to educate thousands of students in this building. I know that none of us want that or will stand for it. Personally, I've worked in public education for nearly 15 school years now. I have seen so many times the multi-generational impact that a revitalized school building can have on students, families, and their community. I have also seen abandoned school buildings, which harm the community, with the worst part being the broken promise to kids who should be in there learning. It's an injustice to let this massive school building that can educate thousands of Providence students sit unused. It's unfair, and it's wrong. But we have an opportunity now to make it right. I know that we can do what's best for kids because at the heart of this matter is children who just want a nice, safe building in which to attend school. So let's come together, put students at the center of this decision, and unlock the full potential of this building for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Eliana Rodriguez. Eliana Rodriguez. Okay. Hallie McCorman. Hallie McCorman. No. And then I have Marisol Villega. Marisol Villega. Good evening.
Buenas noches.
Buenas.
Vengo aquí a apoyar, primeramente, a Providence Rhode Island y también a pedirle, por favor, por el apoyo de la Academia CER. Es muy importante para nuestra comunidad y para nosotros mismos porque hay muchos niños que todavía para entrar a la escuela necesitan tener cupo porque se le hace difícil. Y le pido en el nombre de toda la comunidad hispana que, por favor, no apoyen. Con esto.
Muchas gracias.
De nada.
Gracias. Clara Pérez.
Buena noche.
Buenas.
Yo estoy muy, ¿cómo se dice?, como muy dolida porque yo inscribí mis niños en una escuela charter, como en 50 escuelas. Yo me siento como... Cuando tú lo tienes en una escuela de esa, una escuela buena para mí, y ya no te lo cogieron, tú te sientes muy apenada. Entonces, por eso yo quiero que hayan más charles para que ellos puedan, otros niños tengan la oportunidad porque ya tal vez ellos no la van a tener. Muchas gracias.
Gracias a usted.
Una pregunta. Una pregunta. ¿Y sus niños están yendo a la escuela ahora mismo?
Sí, ellos están en charter.
Están en charter.
International Charles School.
Pero, ¿y cuáles son los que aplicaron y no fueron a la escuela?
Nosotros aplicamos, pero no nos cogieron, no mandaron la... Bueno, yo creía que ya tal vez habían escogido en una escuela y dijeron... Y cuando llamamos a la escuela, dijeron, no, tu hijo quedó en las 70. Digo, ya él no manda tener oportunidades.
La pregunta es, ¿ellos están yendo a la escuela ahora mismo?
Sí.
¿A qué escuela, pública o charter?
En una charter.
Gracias.
I have Victoria Monzon.
Good afternoon, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Victoria Monzon. I am a seventh grader, and I live in Providence. Today, I'm speaking for Excel Academy. To start off, a reason I like Excel Academy is because all of our teachers have a close relationship to our students while also being able to learn from our teachers. Students like me who live in Providence have to wake up every single day very early. And once we get to school, we are very tired. But if we have this building, we are close to school, and we get benefits from not only it benefits for me, but also benefits for others because we get a new location and better sleep schedules. By getting this resource, we also get connections to other universities and colleges. But to get to these colleges and universities, we need advanced classes, which we currently don't have. So, in conclusion, by having this building, we have better sleep schedules, new locations, connections to universities and colleges, advanced classes, and please consider everything I have said. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I have certain people that signed up twice. This is why I'm having a little bit of a difficult time here. So let me just erase this one here. Next, I have Danielle Jones. Danielle Jones. Okay. Oh, there you are. Hello. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. My name is Danielle Jones, and I live in Ward Five neighborhood. I'm here to speak in strong support of Excel Academy leasing the Carl G. Laurel Building and to tell you how it would impact our family. My daughter, she was on a waitlist before going to Excel for five years. Before that, she was, she needed help in reading, and she was...
You want to speak a little closer to her? Yeah.
Before that, when she was at Pleasant Field, she needed help with her reading. She was developing. Now that she's at Excel Academy for the last three years, she's exceeding expectations in both math and ELA. She has to get up super early, like 6:00 AM, and then walk about a mile to get to the bus stop, and then sit on the bus for about 45 minutes before she gets to school. So this new building would make a big difference as far as her sleep schedule and being able to participate in after-school activities. So I strongly ask that you guys approve the building.
Thank you.
Got a question here.
Yudelka Abreu. Yudelka Abreu. Patrick Shelton.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Shelton. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at the Martin Luther King Elementary School in Providence. To be honest, I struggled a little bit to gather and organize my thoughts this evening because I'm a former teacher at the Broad Street School that closed in 2022, along with Carl Laurel. And at that point, both schools were closed due to their disrepair. According to Nick DeMings, spokesman for PPSD, the two schools were closed because together they would require, quote, "$95 million" just to make the two buildings warm, safe, and dry. Now, that was 2022, and we know that construction costs have not gotten cheaper. So let's just say perhaps that those schools were closed under false pretenses. So we're here now. We found ourselves here, and ASAMesser is scheduled to move in next year. And if this lease is approved, we're asking them to share this space with Excel Academy. We've been here before. Forts Elementary School shared a space with Achievement First. And those students and teachers can attest to the fact that it wasn't an equitable partnership, which culminated with Achievement First taking over the entire building while forcing the families of Forts to consolidate with LUMA. Let's not make things any more difficult for the families of ASAMesser as they wait for the reconstruction of their beloved school to be started and completed. And finally, I see a lot of yellow shirts in the crowd, and I totally understand that all parents want what's best for their kids. And many perhaps associate charter schools with being stronger than traditional public schools. I would encourage any parents here who live in Providence to reconsider Providence public schools. ASAMesser is now a three-star school. And my school, Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School, also a three-star school, was the only elementary school in the history of Providence, charter or public, to be awarded a National Blue Ribbon Award from the United States Department of Education. And that was just this past year. So please, I just urge you to vote against this lease.
Thank you. Judith Dixon. Judith Dixon. Victoria Monzon. Oh, so that's one of the names that we're... I have Percy Balla. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, committee members. My name is Pejeh Percy Balla, and I'm a proud father and proud resident of South Providence, a community organizer with Stop the Wait Rhode Island, and I strongly support Excel Academy leasing the Carl G. Laurel Building. When my family and I moved to the South Side, we came with the belief that by collaborating, our community could create a bright future for families like mine, Black and Brown families who work every day to overcome deeply rooted inequities in housing, food access, health care, and education. Since then, I've been able to build bridges with the community members to address food insecurities through our Church's Soup Kitchen and Food Pantry program that serves hundreds of families fresh groceries and fresh food. I've worked to advance health equity as a board member with the American Heart Association, and I've been able to collaborate with different diverse stakeholders to improve the quality of life for families in Trinity Square. And now, through Stop the Way, I help families to advocate for one of the most basic building blocks for a better life: access to a high-quality education. Families in our community are not asking for special treatment. We're asking for a fair chance. My own children had the opportunity to attend a public charter school that transformed how they learned and opened doors to their future, which is now full of promise. I want that for every single family in our community. Excel Academy is a high-quality public school that's ready to serve more families with the strong community support behind them. By leasing the Carl G. Laurel Building to Excel, I believe that we give children the chance to thrive in a supportive, academically excellent environment. This isn't just a building. It's about the future we're building for our children. For us, high-quality education isn't political. It's deeply personal because it gives our kids access. It gives them a shot at success. So therefore, city councilors, I respectfully urge you to stand with families in Providence who simply are asking for access to a quality public education. Please support this lease and turn this empty building into a home for learning, opportunity, and potential. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I have, and this one's gonna be tough, but the middle name is Cooper Jetson. So... Oh, wonderful. Good evening.
Good evening, council members.
Thank you.
My name is Pana Cooper Jackson, and I live in Ward Seven. I'm here today to express my strong support for Excel Academy leasing the Carl G. Laurel Building. As a parent, I'm incredibly grateful for the impact Excel has made on my son. He attended the Isaac Hopkins, and it was a tough time for him. But since enrolling, he has grown both academically and personally. He has struggled with math, but Excel stepped in with consistent one-on-one support. That kind of individualized attention has made a real difference. It's not something every school is equipped to provide. What stands out even more is the culture. As a parent, as he heard, my son feels seen. And as families, we feel supported. Their community connection has set him up for success, not just for today, but for future. Every family deserves access to safe, high-quality, stable public schools right here in the city we call home. Sharing space doesn't take away opportunities. It expands them. It allows more families, especially those from undeserved communities, to access diverse educational models. This lease is about expanding opportunity in our city. If a building is available... If a building is available or a building has available space, why not use it to its full potential? Sharing a facility helps all schools operate more efficiently, saving taxpayer money. I am also a taxpayer, and allowing more funds to be directed towards teaching and learning. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for a system that uses public resources wisely, respects our family, and gives every child a fair shot regardless of their zip code or background. Whether district or charter, we all want the same thing: for our kids to be safe, supported, and successful. Sharing space doesn't make us competitors. It makes us neighbors. Let's work together to build a stronger, more inclusive, public education system for Providence. Thank you for your time and for standing with us families.
Thank you.
All right, last on this list, I have C.H.I.R., I imagine is Chi Heng. My apologies. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Chu Heng. I was born, like many Rhode Islanders, at Women and Infants. I grew up in Providence, and I am now a homeowner in this city. I grew up on the South Side, across the street from Reserve Avenue School, where my siblings and I attended. And again, I am a product of Providence Public Schools. I currently serve on the Board of Trustees for Excel Academy and in the capacity as treasurer. I'm here tonight to urge you to approve Excel Academy's proposed lease for the Carl G. Laurel Building. But first, I want to acknowledge the serious concerns that people raise about charter schools because they're legitimate and they're valid, but only if you can have good-faith conversation about that and not trade in misinformation because there are so many real things to fix, and it's a shame to get distracted by the fake things that we are arguing about. So these are not abstract policy debates. They affect real families in our community. So as someone whose siblings struggled in PPSD while I benefited from attending classical high school, I have experienced firsthand how educational opportunities can diverge within our own system. The truth is, our public schools have faced systemic challenges for decades, long before charter schools existed. The 2019 John Hopkins Report: Detailed Failures That Span Generations. My family first came to this country in nineteen eighty, forty-five years ago, as refugees from Cambodia. So for those of you who don't know what that means, let me tell you. That means that the reason I was born in this country is because the United States bombed my family's country, which ultimately led to genocide where a third of the country died in a span of five years. At the same time, I am grateful to this country for the opportunities that it has given me, and I am grateful to this city that I grew up in and I'm trying to give back. So this is deeply personal for me. I was the first born, American-born, in my family, and we're now three generations of American-born Hengs. However, I'm still the only one with a college degree, which saddens me deeply. I have worked in education for over fifteen years in charter schools. And I have seen amazing schools. I've visited schools all over the country. I've seen good schools. I've seen bad schools. I've seen good charter schools, and I've seen bad charter schools. Okay? So this is not a conversation about charter versus traditional public because there's good and bad in all of them. To my passionate colleagues who are working in Providence Public Schools, I thank you and I applaud you because it is important work. But it's important to create good schools and create systems for good schools. And right now, the Carl G. Laurel Building sits vacant and deteriorating. Excel is offering a proposal that would transform it into a thriving educational center with shared facilities benefiting both Excel students and PPSD students, all Providence students. Rather than viewing this as an either-or choice, I believe we can pursue expanded educational options and systemic reform through revised funding formulas, increased state education funding, and greater accountability for all public schools. Providence families shouldn't have to wait for a perfect solution while their children need education now. This Excel lease represents an opportunity to provide immediate educational options while we continue fighting for a comprehensive reform. I want to speak, just take a moment to just talk about, you know, this. I've worked for, my first experience in education was in fact working for a no-excuse charter school, and I want to clarify something. The reason why a lot of these schools stopped using that phrase, "no excuses," is because it's a soundbite. It was so easy, so easy for people to misunderstand and misrepresent what it meant. The reason why I was attracted to working there because no excuses meant no excuses for the adults who are responsible for educating the kids. You've heard, you have heard some of the passionate educators who are working both in Providence Public Schools and at Excel about the lengths that they will go to for the success of their kids. That's what no excuses means. Okay? So the reason a lot of schools have dropped it, again, is because of the misinformation that can happen. So I'm gonna end here, and I want to thank you for your time and for your service to the community, and I hope you would consider this opportunity that will benefit all Providence students.
Thank you.
All right, next I have London Maralanda. Good evening.
Good evening, city councils. I would like to just say thank you for letting me speak. My name is London Maralanda. I'm in the seventh grade at Excel Academy and have been going here since fifth grade, meaning I'm a founding student. I live in Providence, R.I. Right now, I'm close to finishing up middle school at Excel Academy in Rhode Island. But as we know, the goal is to expand our school big enough so we can go up to twelfth grade where we can continue to build a community of learners. I love my school because they set high standards ensuring that all students are accountable for their actions. It makes me feel safe, respected, and cared for because they always help and provide for those in need no matter what. It takes me thirty-five minutes to get to school every day. The Carl Laurel Building is only five minutes away. Personally, for me, knowing I'm thirty minutes away from school, I get lack of sleep since I have to wake up so early. Having my school near my home is important because this helps me not only have a school close to me for safety reasons, but this also ensures I go to a school that I can benefit from. It helps me and my family because it ensures that I get more sleep, and it ensures that my family can easily transport me to school and back from school to home. By you giving us space of this school, this ensures we can expand our community and continue to help those improve with their actions and academics. Please say yes to Excel's lease. My name is London. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Adalia Wilson?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council.
Hello.
My name is Adalia Wilson. I am in the seventh grade at Excel Academy. I have been going to Excel Academy since fifth grade at the starting year. I live in Providence, R.I., off of Branchport Ave. I love my school because we have created a small and diverse community full of teachers and students who care and respect each other. I have to wake up very early in the morning to get to school since I live really far away from North Providence. The Carl G. Laurel Building is only eight minutes away from my home, meaning that I could get to school on time and my mom does not have to rush to work. Having a bigger school would mean more opportunities for me to be able to learn outside of the four core classes that my school is able to provide. I hope that you will consider this lease for Excel Academy.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Adalia Wilson.
Thank you.
Victor Capellano?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Victor Capellano, and I come before you as the CEO of the Rhode Island Education Collective. I am a proud resident of the City of Providence, living in Ward Nine, and an educator who has dedicated twenty-five years of my life to serving families and students. Tonight, I thank you for taking the time and making space to listen to us, and I urge you to say yes to this lease, yes to revitalizing Laurel, and yes to these families, and to seizing this moment to invest in our city's future. I also ask you to honor the voices of the families who have spoken before you, respecting the decisions, respecting the decisions they've made for their children's education. Stand with them, stand by them, and keep the promises that our city makes to all its children. The children at Excel Academy are part of the fabric of Providence. They are your neighbors. They are the kids playing on our streets. They are the kids in your playgrounds. They are the future leaders of our city, and they deserve to be seen and supported. The Laurel School has served thousands of our children in this city over the years. Today, it's empty, vacant, decaying, and as a drain to our public resources. But it doesn't have to stay that way. Transforming this building into a shared home for learning gives us this chance to bring it back to life. It allows Laurel to be reborn as a vibrant, welcoming place where students from both Excel Academy and PPSD can learn, grow, and thrive together. What makes this lease agreement even more critical is the moment we are in as a city. With Providence seeking an exemption from the General Assembly to raise property taxes to cover this gap, residents, homeowners, renters, and families all across this city will be directly impacted. Approving the lease will allow us to turn an empty building into a catalyst for opportunity, revitalizing Laurel in a way that eases the burden on the taxpayers and creates meaningful collaboration that benefits all Providence students. In addition to Excel's commitment to invest millions of dollars into Laurel, we at the Rhode Island Education Collective have worked hard to raise philanthropic funding, and we are proud to invest those resources right here in Providence. As a product of the Providence Public Schools, it is a personal point of pride for me that these funds will be able to support PPSD and the City of Providence. It is a grant of 1.25 million dollars that we have secured for capital improvement and collaborative work for both PPSD and Excel at the Laurel Building. This proposal offers an example of a win-win for the City of Providence, for taxpayers, for PPSD, and most importantly, for all the children in our community. So to finish, I'll say, listen to all the voices tonight. Read all the letters you've received. Review all the details of what is best for our finances and for all the children of our city, and you will come to the conclusion that this is the kind of smart, innovative, and fiscally responsible solution that we need right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frangeli Sofia Rojas?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sofia, and I am in seventh grade. And I am a founder student of Excel Academy Rhode Island. Before going to Excel Academy, I used to go to Carl G. Laurel from the end of second grade to fourth grade. I would like Excel Academy to get the building of Carl G. Laurel because right now, we only have space for fifth to seventh graders. And we are running out of space, which isn't allowed for new students to join. Another reason, another reason why we would like us to get new building is to expand our community. My definition of Excel Academy's community is that everyone feels safe, connected to each other, and we learn new things from classes, but also things from each other. Having a building closer to us would benefit students to have a better advantage by not having to wake up as early in helping us with our learning. Another benefit of our building will let us expand or expand our sports community. Currently, we only have space to host and have a few teams. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Sofia.
Then we have, I gather, Angela. Ute Angela?
Angela Sofia.
Angela Sofia?
She prefers Sofia.
Sofia. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, sitting council members. My name is Frangeli Rojas, Providence resident of Ward Eight, proud parent of Sofia Rojas, as she prefers to be called, a seventh grader at Excel Academy. I also serve on the Excel Academy Board and am a PPSD graduate. I have two kids in charter schools, and when my husband and I made that decision to enroll our students, both of them in charter schools, it was for the best of our family but for our future in this country. I can sit here because I am livid hearing the stories. I can sit here and write a book about personal stories that I've had as a PPSD student, but also in my job that I do every single day with students that attend PPSD schools. But I'm here today for Sofia because I strongly support the Excel Academy lease of the Carl G. Laurel Building. Bringing the Excel Academy community to the City of Providence, where it belongs, is the right thing to do. For Sofia, it will cut down from almost two hours being on a bus to about an hour. It will allow for parents that are extremely involved in their children's education. And just to give you an example, last week, we were at an interview with a potential candidate for the head of school. And just listening to the things that the parents had to say in that meeting about what they want in Excel Academy just made me proud because it's everything that we're looking for, but everything that Excel is willing to do. This bringing the building to Carl G. Laurel will allow for our program, for our students to have more programs after school. They do an amazing job right now, but they need more time to work with our students after school. It will allow more time for us to spend with families, but for more parents to actually come to our meetings because it is extremely hard for some of our immigrant population to go all the way to North Providence. Excel is strongly supported by parents, as I've seen in every single board meeting that I've been to, every single community event, and after-school programming that they may do. The building will allow for the space and time to build a stronger community more than it already is, and for parents who want to do more in their children's education because we have parents that want more and that are willing to do more. Excel is doing amazing work all around, and I see it every day. How my daughter speaks, how she feels connected to the staff members, not just the teachers in the classroom, how she wants to engage in different activities, and has often said to me that she wants to see more kids come to her school. I am also here today because, as a city, we continue to say we support all students. And to me, by supporting this lease, is you all showing me that you support all students in the area of Providence. This is not about public versus charter. This is about giving the opportunity to the students and families that want it and deserve it. This is about making a difference in our children's lives, holding people accountable, and continuing to build a community that is hungry for education. When my daughter told her teachers in fourth grade that she was going to a charter school, she was told, "A charter school will be too hard for you." An M.L.L. student, so this is how livid I am today. I am so grateful for your support in the leasing of the Carl G. Laurel Building to Excel Academy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next is Carla Donation. Carla Donation.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Bonjour, bonsoir à tous. My name is Carla Donation. I am a parent of a seventh grader in Excel Academy. I'm a taxpayer in the community. I am also a resident of Providence. I am also a resident of Providence. I moved here in Providence in 2021 from New York. I'm a mother of three children. I'm a single parent. All my children attended charter schools in New York. And coming here, when I came in, I, it takes me about three weeks to get my child registered for, I mean, to a public school. The first day she attended, when I went to pick her up, she looked, she looked very deprived. When I asked her, "What's, what happened?", she told me, "Mom, I was in school today. I didn't know if I was to listen to the teacher or the children." Because the teacher was talking and the children were playing. So, I decided, what I, I didn't want to lose what I started with my children. So, I decided to put her in a private school, which cost me $15,000 for that year. I was also grateful for someone to tell me that Excel Academy was opening for the next year to come. So, I registered and there, my child was accepted in, in Excel Academy. I'm not talking about, I'm not saying anything bad about private, I mean, charter and public school. I look at them as both apples, one is red, one is green. They each take a different approach in teaching the children. So, with that being said, I am in support of getting Excel Academy into that building, and I thank you for saying yes to Excel, yes to me, and yes to my daughter.
Thank you. Joseph Buchanan. Joe Buck, are you here? No. Jefferson Asinko. So, they both left. Esteban Puerta.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Esteban Puerta. I serve as the Director of Student Enrollment and Recruitment for Excel Academy. I also lead our Benefits Access Program, which connects families to critical community resources across our Massachusetts and our Rhode Island regions. But long before I took on this role, my journey with Excel began in 2007 as a student in Excel Academy's first middle school. I grew up in East Boston, a community similar to Providence, diverse, hardworking, and full of families striving for a better future for their children. My parents, like many immigrant families, were constantly searching for the best educational opportunity and support systems they could find. When my mother discovered Excel Academy, it became one of the best decisions our family ever made. It changed the trajectory of my life. Today, I have the privilege of working alongside former classmates like Kelly Garcia and others who represent about 11% of Excel's staff as living proof of the mission in action. Excel Academy has been more than just a place of work for me for the past eight years. It's been my professional home and the community that gave me a pathway to college, a meaningful career, and a sense of purpose. Now, in my role leading student enrollment, I wish I could offer that same future to the hundreds of families who remain on our waitlist every year. It's heartbreaking to answer calls from parents only to tell them that their child is number 200 on the waitlist for just 15 available seats. As the Director of Enrollment, one of my top priorities is making sure that our application process is as accessible to every Providence student. Our outreach includes a variety of methods, including direct mailers, promotional materials in Providence Place Mall, open houses, and meetings at community centers. We provide English and Spanish support via phone, text message, and in-person for our families. We want every family in Providence to know that applying to Excel Academy is possible and that they are supported every step of the way. Since our first year in Rhode Island, I have led our student enrollment lottery to ensure it's fair, transparent, and compliant with all ride and board approved policies. The lottery is publicly advertised, available in both English and Spanish, and conducted through schoolmen and independent third-party platform. We also invite, which is not a requirement, a neutral third party unaffiliated with Excel to oversee the lottery to ensure full transparency. Every student receives a randomly generated lottery number from the platform. Excel has no influence over the outcome. Every child has an equal shot. No test scores, special education status, or MLL designation, except for sibling preferences considered. Council members, the families of Providence are asking for more, more access, more opportunity, less time traveling to and from school so they have more time to pursue their interests, play sports, and spend with their families. Approving this lease would allow us to meet that demand and serve even more students who deserve the kind of education that Excel can provide and has provided multiple generations of students like myself. I urge you to please approve our lease proposal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, Zendaya Coley.
Good morning, city council members. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Zendaya Coley. I am in the seventh grade at Excel Academy. I also have been in the school since I was a fifth grader. I love my school because they support the students' needs and also make sure the students get the support that they need, which makes me feel like I am in a supportive community. It takes me about 35 minutes to get to school every day, but the Carr G. Building is only six minutes away from my school. Having my school near my house is, is important because it'll be easier to get to my school on time. It also helps me and my family, it also helps me and my family manage gas throughout the week. Please say yes to Excel lease and thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to acknowledge Councilwoman Peterson, who is also the Vice Chair of the Committee, who had just joined us. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we have two more that signed up to testify. So, next we have Naije Moli Gaba. Naije, where are you? Sefwe. Connor Giles Connor. And you, my friend, are last on the list.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking as a resident on Kenyon Street. I live directly across from the Laurel School. And originally, I was going to talk about traffic and parking and boring things like that. I mean, the streets around the school are chaotic as it is with the building being empty, having two school systems with their separate pickup and drop-off times does sound pretty untenable, and I know a lot of my neighbors, speak for them, would feel the same way. But tonight, mostly, I want to echo our amazing public school teachers and parents who tonight were talking about how charters eat into the public school system. I think that is true. And I want to underscore that, in a very literal sense, this lease amounts to the privatization of valuable public space. It's a beautiful building, even empty. It's been used by neighbors as like a dog park and people use the playground. It's just a very beautiful building, and to see it handed over to a private institution, I think the word was unaccountable, you know, it's not answerable to any democratic institutions, it's not unionized. This really amounts to privatization of an amazing public resource. You know, this is a pattern. We've seen it with public housing. Let the buildings fall into disrepair and just wait along, wait for a private developer to come along and sort of fix the problems, but, you know, we hear there's no alternative, we need to rise above politics, but I think there is an alternative, and it is to keep this building public, whether it's public housing or within the public school system. I really think you guys should say no to this lease and keep this building public. Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, so that will conclude this meeting, committee and ordinance. I want to thank you all again for participating. If you know of anybody that has not sent in a letter or had an opportunity to express themselves in regards to such an important decision that we need to make, you can still do that. I know this is extremely important to our family, especially to the kids, to the children. So, we will continue to vet this lease, and at some point, we'll be back here once we're ready to make a decision. So, for the time being, I'll entertain a motion to continue. Made by Councilwoman Peterson, second by Councilman Vargas, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And being that there is no further business in the calendar, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Councilwoman Vargas and second by Councilwoman Peterson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.